I'd like to call a meeting to order. The first item of business, the approval of tonight's agenda. I have a motion with the revisions. Dennis second, David all in favor. It's carried. Second item, adoption of the minutes from the January 21st meeting. I have a motion to adopt the minutes from that meeting. Dennis second, Michael all in favor. Yes, carried. All right. Which moves us into public comments, senior public comments. And then it's a new business. So we have, we have a little bit of hiatus here, which has given Dennis some time to catch up, it looks like, and get way ahead of us. So we'll be diving into some of those things. A welcome to Louise, to the commission. And, you know, Michael's a relatively new face. Some of us have been here seemingly forever. And to David, welcome back in your new capacity.
Well, thank you.
The council will vote on it.
Yeah.
So I can't remember where, does the council need them both?
Not on this one.
No, on this, it does on the other ones, but not on this one.
Not on this one or rec, yeah.
Yeah.
If you'd like to change that, we can work towards that. What is the rationale?
I don't know the rationale, the water committees as well, the water committees.
Yeah.
I guess there is a liaison between the two bodies.
Right.
I feel like in the Local Government Act, it actually says that the councillor can't vote.
It does.
That's my memory is like, the APC is one of the only ones that's actually like outlined in the Local Government Act for a community charter. It says something like you can set one up, but it doesn't say, but I think again it says it's like the committees are not voting.
Well, in that case, you couldn't have made that motion.
Oh, good point.
Start again.
So back to which motion was that?
That was the...
That was the notch in the minutes?
Was it the minutes?
Yes.
It was the minutes, yes.
It was the minutes? Okay, okay. Okay, I'll move it.
All right, yes. And second.
I did before.
I did before. You can second. All in favor?
I've had some privacy.
And we got carried. And we're, okay, jumping back to new business. Conservation development. As I said, I didn't know how familiar I was with the concept, so I did a little bit of that for a read. I could send the link to you if you're interested. This is just seven or eight pages from Wikipedia about conservation development, which was a concept developed in the 1980s by Randall Hart, who was a planner. And it has to do with cluster housing and clustering housing to establish a main target open space. And there were some other principles that are related to that, which I'm sure Dan will speak for more detail. How shall we deal with this? Do you want to give a little bit of background for more?
Sure.
From priority B1?
Right. Yeah, so it's in the Island Plan, which is basically, you know, we sat down and did a workshop for a couple of days coming up with, probably everybody's seen a copy of the Island Plan. Anyway, this is, all it has for this is, says that the APC should do it.
That's a part I see. Oh, I see, homework.
Homework, that's right. So, you know, we're hoping that you have interest in doing this. But, you know, it is, the principle of clustering is in the Efficient Community Plan, but there's sort of more to it than that. We had, you know, it was in my election platform, it was in the most election platforms, it was discussed a fair bit. And it was discussed a little bit at council a couple nights ago. So I'll sort of talk about the drivers of what we're looking for here. And there are really kind of four drivers, I think. And interestingly, so I was at a climate change conference today. It had to do with municipalities working with other levels of government. And I think three of the principles have to do with climate change. And the first slide of the conference was looking at your, making sure that you focus on your sphere of influence and for municipalities. The biggest influence in terms of climate change is land use by law. And so it falls into that little piece. So of the four sort of drivers, one is sort of the ecological health issue. Is there, we obviously, a time when the summers are getting drier and drier. We don't know what the summer is going to be like, but I just saw the Environment Canada's map, hotter for BC, drier for BC. And you look around the island and you just see all kinds of trees dying already. So it's keep, it's avoid fragmenting the land, keep as much of our land whole as possible to protect the ecology. And also to protect any sensitive, sensitive areas, sensitive ecosystems that are identified should obviously be protected as well. And, you know, John Reed gave some good presentations about this, and he's actually applied it quite well in the work he did at Grafton Lake. And often we talk is protecting perhaps 50% of the land. I mean, there's no clear number, it would depend on all sorts of things, but protecting a good chunk of the land. The second part is about transportation. It's land use and transportation. And to read, about three quarters of the emissions on Bowen Island are from transportation. And that's a very, but it's the biggest thing, is driving off the island and driving on the island. So to, we need better, there's only four ways you can reduce emissions from transportation, two of which we can work on, land use planning so you don't have to travel as much, and mode shift so you can switch the bicycle from buses and stuff like that. TransLink's data on buses shows that our buses are incredibly poorly used compared to other places that TransLink can spend their money, where they got lineups, commercial driving, stuff like that. And we have empty buses or half full buses wandering around the island because we're a low density area. So for any, any development, any rezoning, we would hope that there's an opportunity for clustering, that the properties, the houses around existing transportation routes or near transportation routes, or near where the multi-use paths, multi-use path will be, or maybe creating your own, as John Reed is doing, building a multi-use path. So in other words, helping link to existing transportation networks and alternative transportation. A third, and Alison brought this up the other night, is the resilience, infrastructure costs and resilience. So by clustering, you know, you have less roads that need to be built, need to be maintained, need to be snow cleared, and all kinds of other infrastructure of it. We had, in the bad storms last year, we had a couple of coves blow out, costing us nearly a million dollars to fix, really expensive. And so obviously, part of this is retaining green infrastructure as much as possible so that wetlands and forests are able to absorb the stormwater to the extent that they can. And then finally, it's sort of the island character and the quality of life sort of thing about, about, so that we retain sort of the feel of the island, which is protecting forests, so you see forests rather than sort of lots and houses all over the place spread along, along the land. So we don't kind of, as some people have said, become like a version of West End, sort of thing. So, and then of course, it's the idea of connecting the trails so that the, and that the land is public. So in terms of sort of the attributes that we'd be looking for in terms of a policy like this, it would be encouraging, protect clustering the houses to protect, protect the forest, to protect the ecosystem, that that land be, at least some of that land is public and available for the lifestyle of people on Bowen, that there'd be links to transportation and alternative transportation, and that there'd be a low infrastructure burden. So those are the kinds of principles that council will be looking for. How to do that in a policy, so what we're looking for is some way that this can become some guideline, a policy. Daniel to speak a little bit about how this might look, so the council could use it. Oh, one more point. A rezoning comes word. We have some, it could be a list of attributes that we're looking for, community amenities we're looking for, that could include these things. But the tricky part is, it has to be something that people want to do, otherwise they could just say, well, I'm not going to bother and we'll just go with the land use by law and divide it up into however many properties that we're allowed to divide something to and spread out all over the land. So it has to be something designed in a way that a landowner or developer would want to do it, and they'll be able to provide some of these attributes. Daniel, that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's the right, that's why I pulled initially just like policies that are in the OCP that talk about, more about clustering development, is the language in the OCP that's saying, okay, one approach would be a document that says this is a policy that says when somebody comes to rezone, we're going to, you know, amplify the cluster development policy, like language and say, this is what we're looking for when that comes up. The other thing we could see, maybe see, I think would be recommendations of changes maybe to OCP policies or changes to land use by law to better match the principles that the APCs have come up with, but, yeah.
The piece that I was reading, there's two before features, if you will, this kind of development. One is that the conserved land is set aside under some kind of easement or some kind of, there's some kind of protection for the land so that it's not, it's not under the ownership of the developer or privately individuals. That the development, that the development itself finances protected area, both the development of protected area, whatever that may mean, which includes less than more, but also ensures maintaining it over time. That to me, I mean, I think that's a very interesting principle.
It is.
And I can see adding some ramifications. The third one is that each development has to begin with a survey to define what the ecological features are that you want to save. And again, there could be some inherent challenges with that because what one person would consider to be an ecological feature worth saving to someone else might look like a great home site. So these things have to be balanced, right? And then the fourth one, the fourth point was that developments also use a variety of design features to reduce some of the negative impacts inherent in development. Those are speeches we'll already do. So I think this is, I think it's an interesting conversation because it's not just that, oh yeah, you obviously do that. There, I can imagine some pushback from, you know, some of the development community and even some future homeowners to, well, it sounds great on paper, but it's going to cost me and it also may mean that, you know, I'm not going to get to go where I want to go. So...
I have another question. How much land on Bowen is actually involved in this, large? Because as far as I know, there's almost none that's left in large tracts. And I happen to be one of the owners of an area of land that was downzoned without us knowing anything about it years ago, nothing to do with this table. And now we're caught up in, oh no, nobody can build down there because there's no bus route, and there's no this, there's creeks. And frankly, it's all small holdings for the most part, except for what Wolfgang has. And we're going to get caught up in this, well, everybody wants big tracts of land and they want cluster development. Well, how the hell do you do cluster development on 20 acres? You don't. And, you know, it's, it's sort of, so what are, what, so I look at it from my perspective, but I also look at it, how much of this land is left? Like what are we talking about? Who owns big tracts?
There aren't you, well, Daniel and I have looked at some of them on the map actually. There are some that, you're right.
Not very much. So how much time do we spend fussing about 100 acres? I don't know how much land there is that's in, in big chunks.
But I think even, like when you look to the one, there's sort of, there's some big chunks left.
Yeah.
There's not, you know, like you take, like you take, you sort of left, there's not many like district lots left.
Yeah.
But I think even like, I know I've had conversations over the last year, or since the election, with people who own, maybe they own 20 acres or they own 10 acres, but and they, the OCP says, you know, maybe now there are 10 acres and there are one lot. But the OCP says actually you're, you could be four lots if they rezone. And so it's saying, okay, well, this is something council now is identifying as priorities, conservation development. So it's saying if you come to rezone, you're not just looking to rezone to four equal lots that, you know, but maybe instead council's saying that through a rezoning, you want four, we want four half acre lots in one part of the land, and then the rest be considered or something, whatever the policy would come to, but so it's not just thinking, oh, what 200 acres, but thinking about the acre parcel.
Well, you, yeah, and you could go down easily to five acres and still cluster, you know, where you just create two lots, you can still cluster it and preserve some of the forests and...
There are rocks and stuff in the way. But, you know, the island is also very, it's not flat.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. No, it's, it's a complicated thing.
Yeah, and that's how I interpret it. I, you know, partly I, we've been screwed, in my opinion, but, and that was years ago. And now if we're going to put a whole bunch of focus on, you know, prevention, it's not just us. And, you know, how much time are we going to spend if, if there's some big tracts of land? Like we have so much public land here already. Like Crown Land is the majority of the island. So, you know, like, and it's not that I disagree with principles, but I sort of think, you know, how far are we going to take this and how, how, how much is reasonable?
Well, I think, I think one thing that we could do fairly quickly is just have an increased front yard setback off of the highway with preserving trees and stuff, which goes to the point of, you know, driving through and actually seeing trees and not houses built right up against the road. I mean, we've got a neighbor right across the street from us that's got five acres and they're building their house right against the road. And there's, you know, it's, you go, what's, you know, what's going on here? So that, that changes the character. And really, the, the character and beauty of the island is the forests and the trees and that sort of thing. So I think there's some little things could, that could over time make a fair difference.
I'm also thinking, you know, there's some small rezonings. There was one, we had, I don't know, a year or so ago, and, and I think, I'm trying to remember, it was...
Time Alert?
Yeah, I guess that was it. And so there was sort of a question, okay, so what are we looking for here? If, if council had some sort of guidance as to what it was looking for, it makes it a lot easier to, you know, look at decisions like that. Okay, here's what we're looking for. And maybe even provide some of these things and so on.
I think the, it's interesting, so the, again, just for that one, some of the benefits, if you will, of this kind of development, ecosystem services, seem, it's the thing that Dennis is speaking to, which, which you hadn't really mentioned, but scenic landscapes, historic and cultural resources, you know, even something like when we're talking about the Miller Road development on some of the municipal land, and the proposal there, which looks to me a little bit like a strip mall in Las Vegas.
It's been changed.
Yeah, and, and that's good. I'm glad to hear that. The, so it's not just about, you know, leaving green space for wild animals to go through, you know, where there are also houses, there are other reasons for doing it. And some of them are about maintaining character, which I think is important. And I, and I think there, I think there is room to, you know, to consider that kind of approach even on quite small parcels. So, and conceptually, I'm sort of on the side of support for it in general. It would be interesting to know, I mean, how much develop, I think the other thing is just a case in point, so we've seen what a, a development looks like with a bunch of 10 acre lots on it. And it's a travesty, you know? It's a really unfortunate feeling place to be, where it doesn't need to be. And it is because it follows the letter of the law.
Because they got sued by council.
Absolutely. But I think, so this brings to mind another question that I had, and David may be, because I don't know. Is it, if you consider the concept of clustered development, do you also consider, as consider a different, a slightly changed housing typology, which would maybe allow for more density in a, in a closer, in a, in a smaller footprint?
I would personally, but that's just me speaking, so that's not something that anyone else has had any discussions about, but I'm aware of.
I don't think anyone else has spoken here because I do that.
No, I mean, the one it does say for clustered, like their definition of clustered development talks about without increasing the permitted density of lots or dwellings.
Right. So in theory, if you took a 10 acre lot and you could have a density of X on it, and you worked with the developer and said, okay, we'd like to dedicate half of that, 50% of the land to green space, then the other 50%, the density would automatically go up. And as long as you're within the height limits and so on, I guess you'd get, you'd get...
Well, you would, you would have, if you allowed or allowed, say, five houses on that lot, you'd still have just five houses, but they'd be clustered tightly.
Yeah, it wouldn't be...
But it wouldn't be a real, a true increase in density.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's just, they're just tighter.
Yeah, but maybe that's, maybe that's something that should be allowed, is an increase in density if you're going to do this clustering. Now, an awful lot of people live on the island, so they don't have to live beside each other. So there also has to be the reality, and they, you know, of what do people want? Why do they come here? They don't come here, for the most part, to have close neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, that's one of the things you get if you move out of the city. So, you know, we, we also need to be able, we need to think about the reality of what is, what people want to buy, or how they want to live, and so, but I, I do think that there should be trade offs if, if, if requirements are put in. You know, I think, I think it's a, it's not a...
Well, it's one of the reasons why I put that on the table, because I think it's an interesting question. I don't think that conservation development equals low density.
No.
That's not, that's not my understanding of the concept. The concept is more of getting, getting a sufficient amount of open space to ensure that development is, does not have a hugely negative impact on a particular parcel. Now Louise?
I feel like potentially down the road, there'll be a desire for people to have a closer density, I mean, as you're talking about. And this just provides a way to organize that, or guidelines under which to develop that. At this point, when I look at housing prices and I look at in different areas, what is not available on the island is a stratite, lower cost housing sort of development. And, but if that were to be considered further down the line, it would be good to have some guidelines under which that was undertaken.
And this, this kind of development, it's, it's uniquely suited to a bare land strat of climate development as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that sort of answers one of the questions I have, is so we set aside some land that's not being developed, not home sites. So what happens to that land? Does it just sit there? I mean, who has responsibility for ensuring that it is continued to be protected? And bare land strata is one way of doing it, because then that presumably becomes common area, common property for the... But I'm wondering a little bit if the tail's not wagging the dog here, I mean, if we, if we as, to my mind, it's not a matter of promoting cluster development so much as promoting responsible conservation of the land and the natural resources in the land. That may lead to cluster development in most cases, but not every case. So I'd be inclined toward principles that, that were conservation principles as such, rather than density principles or cluster principles. I think Louise makes a good point about affordability. I mean, if you put all the houses in a restricted area, that's a lot cheaper for septic sewer, electricity, roads. So it might be attractive to developer. And the one final thing, I, I think about Grafton Lake, I mean, a lot of what John Reed did was he set aside land that he could never build on anyway.
Yeah.
You know, the marshy stuff and the, and, and that's just great. I mean, it's, it's, it's good that he was almost forced into that. But, and I think that may happen on a lot of parcels. I mean, you may look at a plan and say, wait a minute, there's a creek here. You've got to stay away from that. Having said that though, I still think we should try and enunciate some principles.
Yeah, to a certain extent, one of this last point you made, the riparian regulations do a job already for us, right, from a provincial perspective, to ensure that there is not development close to valleys of water, including streamways and so on.
Yeah, and of course waterfront and the...
And water as well. So, I'm just curious, take a step back, and David, from council perspective and also Dan, from your perspective, what is it you're looking for from the APC apart from us doing some homework? And what does that homework require?
Yeah. Speaking of that, I just want to make one more point, and I think it was, we sort of spoken about this about, as if it's about big chunks of land that are way out there, but in the workshop that we had on the community lands back in, a year ago, basically, and they talked about the same principle for some of the lots that we have as community lands, just to make sure that, and this would be attached housing, but make sure that the housing is clustered tightly so that there's as much open space as possible, even in, you know, smaller parcels, parcels that are right down here. So it's a principle that can be applied in, you know, large parcels way out there somewhere, but also in quite different way in smaller pieces of land adjacent to some of them. So what's council looking for? Do they want some help? Like how, you know, we could just say to Daniel, hey, Daniel, come up with some policies and turn this into some policies, and Daniel can go in and do a week's work. But it's hoping that the APC would, you know, come up with some approaches and come up with some proposals that we could discuss here, and that could then be a recommendation to council, that might be what a policy could look like, or the beginning to the policy. I've also spoken to the head of planner at Metro Vancouver, who's interested in this too, because in some of the areas, you know, out in Fraser Valley, it's or toward Langley and so on, they're interested in the same issue, but wondering whether clustering houses will not be appropriate in, in terms of rural character and so on. So this whole issue of how you handle this whole rural character thing and, and, you know, reduce costs, increase density, but when and how and so on. So there's an opportunity to also to, you know, send something to Metro Vancouver and ask for their thoughts, and I'm sure they would be willing to help.
Well, I, one of my other peaks, which is sort of a slightly different look at it is, I've been seeing across the island, large, fairly large tracts that people buy and then they clear cut, just totally clear cut, and then do plunk a house in there. And that sort of says, do they really want to live on Bowen, or do they want a large suburban estate? And so I think we could look at, you know, some standards about what can you cut and what makes sense and how you conserve some of the woodlands.
I'll be absolutely opposite about having been involved with the farmers. And if there is any dirt on this island, the first thing that people want to do is cut down stuff. Everybody is being an urban farmer now.
Oh, farming is a good thing.
And it's great, yeah. So, you know, like to prevent tree cutting is preventing...
Tree cutting's a good, interesting point though, from a practical analysis. Right now, you, if you issue a development permit, you don't inquire us which trees are going to be cut down, and you certainly don't specify that certain trees must remain, right?
No, and we only would do that if you're in a water set.
Or it's an evil tree, or something like that.
I think that's a good example though, of how conservation development principles might be embedded, is giving the authority to the people issuing development permits to look at the natural landscape, not just the home site. Although personally, I'm a long way away from putting that in the bylaw.
Yeah.
But I mean, that, that's the kind of path we could go down. I, I think we could, I mean, I could easily endorse embedded conserve development principle. Sure, it's a great idea. But, you know, what does it look like on the ground? Well, I'm wondering if maybe two or three APC members might sit down with Daniel and sort of hammer through some possible policies, arrangement of policies, and then bring it back as a fairly efficient way of...
Or maybe not with it.
With or without you?
Is that directing staffed for the APCs?
Right. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know how, and I don't know if you thought, David, how, how we would see, like, looking for the APC to do the work. But yeah, forming like some sort of subcommittee that would just meet to work, to hash it out, to bring out something written to the next APC meeting to discuss it.
And then we could give something to council that's, that is practical and clear.
Yeah. Because I think, yeah, I do think, and David can tell me too, that, you know, the sort of, council outline, okay, these are a couple of steps we think they would have to do with this. Present completed research and recommendation to council. Is that step number D? And I would think that, that could be, you know, like a written report that says, this is what we looked at, this is what we found, and this is then our recommendation from that, because then it kind of gives council the background. It's not just like a recommendation where we say, we recommend council adopt these principles, blah, 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 but it says, it's a little flushed out, that says, this is what we looked at, and this is what the thought went into it, and this is what we came up with.
I'm, I'm curious about, what's the, what is the end goal? I think that would help to guide and give some, give some framework to what the APC is doing. Otherwise, I think this could be a real scatter ground thing, which can go everywhere. Is the end, it says draft policy. The drafting policy... Is the end, it says draft policy. The drafting policy, I'm not sure exactly what that means. Is the end goal to make changes to the OCP? Is the end goal to get some of those changes embedded into language in the language of bylaw? Are these the long-term objectives? Or is it something a little less specific than that? Is it more of a, it's already in the OCP, but it needs to be fleshed out? It needs to have areas of land, areas of the island that are identified. It needs to have a, 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 a deeper data for policy. I guess that's what I was.
So when, when David and I first talked about it, what I had envisioned was, so Steph, do you want to pull up even that's like the green building strat policy?
So this is.
Green building standards. So this is an example of a policy that we don't use very often, but, but that something that says, okay, in a rezoning that comes forward, you know, these are standards. And so that was sort of what we thought is, okay, that's one thing that could come out of this. It's a policy that just says in a rezoning where somebody's looking to, you know, increase the number of lots that are there from the current values by law. That these are the principles. We want to follow these conservation development principles. These are the principles. And then it gives a guide, one for people thinking about rezoning. We say, okay, here's, you know, you want to look at this before you come to, to apply. And then when they apply, then we can use it as well in council and use it to, to evaluate and say, okay, this is meet the principles that are laid out. Now, what I don't want to close off the, the doors to though is if the ABC doesn't work and say, okay, we think this is a great policy, but then there's, you know, there's two OCP policies that actually speak against this and we think it actually needs to be.
Against it.
Yeah. So maybe the ABC says, well, but really it would work a lot better if we had this OCP policy or we change this OCP or we change the standards by law standard or something like that. So we think it's like, this is a good outcome, but then I don't want to close it off and say, if you find something else that's going to be hindering it.
But this is not legislative, right? If somebody doesn't meet the built green gold or the energy standard, that doesn't mean that their application is necessarily going to be refused.
No. So this is a policy for council in terms of council determining.
So I think that's where we're headed, is some flexibility.
Yeah.
I, I think the goal drew is very simple. We're trying to prevent human extinction.
Fair enough.
A lawful goal.
Support, support you on that. Um, yeah, I mean, as policy, this is, you can, you can, you know, it's a bit of a word as well, that, you know, strongly encouraged. Um, so, but it sounds like the first thing would be to get a policy statement coming from the APC to council, which probably would have embedded in it some notions about fine tuning the OCP to, to incorporate the, the proposed policy changes or the proposed policy.
So I think it also, uh, uh, will have to almost, uh, ultimately, uh, get into the zoning and the, and stand development standards.
Well, and I think that's step two.
Yeah, that's step two. Uh, we, yeah, fleshing out the, the range of principles and modifying the OCP.
And I saw, you know, and, and also looking at where this would apply now. I mean, I think that needs to be taken into account as well.
Yeah, there's mention of top hierarchical. Did John Reed need an amendment to the OCP in his crafting like he did, didn't he? Yeah.
And to Christie's point, he also got additional density.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah. And like when Christie raised that, I, I would be favorable to him. My proposal is that some sort of a, some sort of encouragement, um, could be useful, you know, otherwise, I mean, if it's a policy like this, it's a policy to like council. But if, if the proponent really isn't interested in it whatsoever and just applies the land just by law, well then council's got nothing to do. Uh, so it's, if, if there's some sort of incentive in there that I'd be interested in that. I'm not sure about other councils, but I would be.
There's a component to this which you mentioned a few months ago there, which is of particular interest to me. And it's part of the density question, um, is, you know, how, is what is the typology? What is the typology which retains rural character, whatever that may be? And yet allows for higher density that isn't a three-story box apartment. You know, that would, you know, and I think there's, and of course different lot sizes with different densities are going to have different, a different equation for that. But the, the overall, the end result, the typology, what that looks like, the building form, I think is a very interesting, important part of that because I, the, while I, I sort of get that there's a, density is a bit of a four-letter word I'm going for a lot of folks. I think that you can do density in different ways. And having nothing but single family developments on lots of a certain size is, is a cookie cutter approach, which in the end is going to end up with a lot of diversity, which is going to be an upgrade, a petrotone. And there's also the whole housing need question and how do you, how do you get, and, and, you know, and I've had this conversation with John Reed as well. And, you know, I think any, any developer will tell you, the cheapest way to build, to, to build housing is to combine units into a single building, right? So that, then that brings back that typology question. So I think that's a personal thing of mine, but I think that's interesting. How do we go about this? I think there is a, you know, something that happens outside of the meeting spectrum and I come back to regroup. And, uh, it looks like, um, council has made some suggestions about what that background research might look like, including looking to other, um, presumably other municipalities, thereby laws and policies. Islands Trust and Metro Vancouver. Um, and, you know, uh, I'm sure that the, um, I don't know. Does anyone in the room, Randall Arnt?
Oh, I know Randall and worked with.
All right. We've got, we've got Dennis on board. So I mean, it would be obviously bringing that, bringing his policies, his, his concepts into that conversation and seeing how that all runs out would be really very useful.
In fact, you have as book.
Yeah.
There you go. Um, what's the timeframe? When do you want to see something from the council? Do you, I mean, we're all going to probably work all through the summer unless I would.
I think so. I, I thought the next council meeting you have to come. And obviously it's, you know, would be some. Did we have a target? I think at the end of the year. You know, what's it say at the end?
At the end of all of the.
Oh, it's National Island.
So just for Louise, there's a page called reports and publications on our website. And it's got this community lands workshop report in there below. So we have a great plan. I'm going to erase you.
We'll see, we'll see. Paper, paper or digital. Looks like, it looks like, it looks like paper's going to win, but I'm not. It's close. Oh no.
Next, next page.
January 1st, 2020.
Yeah.
Can't be right.
So what did it say? So are broadly accepted the draft policy completed?
Right, January 1st, 2020.
Yeah.
You found it first. Yeah.
But that's acceptance by.
Already accepted with the draft policy completed. So that doesn't mean that council has actually approved it at that point, but okay, we're on the, we're on the right track and then we've got kind of the principles and we're kind of.
So you've received something by the.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So would we be working with the, there is a climate action group as well, right?
Uh, there is.
And would we be working with them or just?
Um, I don't think so.
So they're flying for some of the other tasks under the same.
And I'm working with them on some. I'm sure you got the council shortly.
Cause some of these things like, I mean, the, the, the composting, what's that got to do with cluster development?
No, no, so just.
In fact, maybe it's a good thing to cluster away from the compost.
Yeah, yeah. So in terms of time, I think then if the ABC's working, it was like presenting to council in November. That seems like a, a timeframe.
Yeah.
Draft policy.
Yeah.
Can I get out of just a general sense of who's interested in, in working on this?
I don't think, pardon Louise's first meeting, so maybe. Sorry, did I see, I missed the hand.
Yeah. So, so Dennis Michael and Louise have all indicated interest. I have an interest, but not a full-time one. Still have a full-time, I would join.
Well, I.
But I would, I, I would like to have some participation when possible. Um, so.
And I'd like to get David to.
I'd like to participate to the extent that it's appropriate.
Sure. Great. Yeah. Great.
And I guess I should throw my hand up because I'm going to be, I'm not as keen on a lot of these.
But yeah, but I think what we will do, Christie, is maybe every APC meeting, we'll bring back where we are with this, you know, moving forward through it at all. Um, so everybody gets a chance to, and, and, you know, as we have sort of a little bit of maybe a milestone of, of information that's been worked through, thought through, but it gets, it gets sent out to everybody in the APC here. Sort of like stays on.
Cause I, I, I really believe that the, we're just creating more and more and more things. And as a tiny little island, there's just more and more requirements and zones and this is and that's, and, um, it's, uh, sure is different than how it used to be. It makes it complex.
There's a.
And I know there's lots of people that like rules and there's other people that are.
I have a, as a, and, and not to contradict what you're saying, but maybe to, just as a point of interest. The other island that I have a lot of connection with is Savory Island.
Oh, it has nothing.
Uh, my, and my grandparents built a cottage there in 1935. And I spent all my childhood summers there in my early twenties. I lived there for five years. And the population populace was 13. Uh, and, um, the turn of the last century, the, uh, three quarters of the island was subdivided into 50 by 150 foot lots, which were sold through from the, you know, thirties, forties into the seventies and, but nothing ever happened on it. And then a good water taxi service happened and a better road happened and better ferry service happened. And you go into Savory now in the summertime, it's about 10,000 people. And there are vehicles everywhere because the water taxi will bring people, people's cars and trucks and stuff. And despite the fact that it's off the grid.
And there's no water.
And the water is, everybody's got a well or whatever. Um, yeah, it's, uh, and, but there is no oversight. And there are no rules. The only rule is, is a health rule about having some separation between a well and septic tank. So while I, I think we can get, we can get over zealous with rules, sometimes they.
Yeah, no, fair enough. But it's, it's just, it's what somebody's idea of, of the right thing to do is not everybody's idea of what the right thing. Like some people, you know, like I have a fear of forest fires, so I like to see a lot more trees cut down. And all the dead ones cut down and roads into Mount Gardner because I think that's our route to safety. Now, every, other people are horrified by that because trees are what Bowen Island is. And, you know, so there's, I don't think one is right, one is wrong. It's just that we look through different, um, lenses and depending on where on the island we live, depending on what type, you know, uh, what type of house we have or size of lot or when we came here. And it's just, I think we need to just not make it like a microcosm of the city would be my request because, um, with everything, too many rules.
I think you should say that because I think this is initiative that will actually prevent us from turning into a microcosm, microcosm of the city. But that's my, my take on it. So.
I tend to agree. I mean, I think the, the whole idea here is to have more undeveloped land.
Yeah, preserve the island as much as we can. While providing housing affordable. I mean, it's just easy. You could probably get it done in ten minutes.
But Christie, I'm, I'm with you on the fire thing. I think that's a, that's a big deal and, and somehow I think the municipality needs to address that in terms of maybe some building standards. Exterior sprinklers.
Well, it's, it's. There are, there are stratade developments and non-stratade developments ongoing where it's required that you have sprinklers.
But a forest fire is not going to be stopped by a sprinkler system.
Well, not an interior sprinkler system, but.
Yeah, just on fire. Have you, has anyone seen the fire smart presentation?
Yeah.
And so, um, fires are started, um, by houses usually. It's a, a house or some work, could be a campfire or something like that. But, um, one of the, one of the things about cluster development is what fire smart is saying is we need to, you know, build a fire safe zone around your houses.
Clear cut.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not completely clear cut, but so that's another advantage of clustering houses because it means you're, you're not having to make clearings, you know, all over the place and really cut down a lot of forest. Um, so that is, that is another point on the forest protection.
I've done quite a bit of work in the Swopeishaloo Regional District and they have a number of development bylaws that speak to things like that. So when you, you're landscaping, they have strict rules for your landscaping. The, the species of tree you can use, well pitched trees, they have to be three meters apart, you know, and the, the cloud materials on houses and other buildings are specified. Yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting. Uh, I think the suggestion in terms of this, that, um, we've got a, a subcommittee who's eager to, um, do some stuff here. Dennis, would you be willing to take on a role of coordination of that?
Sure.
I'm not asking to chair necessarily, but if he would contact everybody, say, oh, here's a plan, date and time we're going to meet. Is that going to work for everybody or get back to me and let me know if there would be something else or do a, do a poll.
Do you know how to do that?
You would have to do that. I don't know how to do that.
I can show you.
Okay.
If you, if you'd be willing to take that on.
You mentioned.
Oh, Randall Arnt.
Sorry?
Randall Arnt, which is A R N, A R E N T. Oh, okay.
D T.
D A, something like that.
Creative prospects?
Well, there it is, Randall Arnt. Okay. And it's.
Arnt, yeah.
I can forward this to the, to you can see it.
Okay. Cause one of the things, one of the tasks is research.
So I just sent everyone a link to that Wikipedia and the subarticles are part of that. So I think we should probably be conceptually, you know, try to get together once a month anyway. The summer's going to be obviously a bit trickier, but we've got a little bit of time. On that note, I'll be away from shooting a total life.
Daniel, is that the other, or council other similar bylaws and policies in other communities, is that supposed to be the comparator group or anywhere?
I mean, anywhere to some extent. I always find it more helpful with comparisons in BC. Cause then it's like, okay, then it's working with the same legislation, legislation that we have, right? So it's easier to say as a direct comparison as opposed to like Australia where I go, I don't know what you're allowed to do in Australia.
My impression would be that you normally, you normally look to municipalities, well, and bylaws.
Yeah.
As opposed to regional districts? And is there some reason for that? Is that?
No, municipalities have more power than regional districts. So it's an easier, an easier comparison to make. But yeah, like I tend to, whenever I look at, you know, similar communities, I start with Islands Trust and Sunshine Coast and sort of go and, and see the sky really, and then work out from there and see what's. But.
I can send that list.
Sure, but comparable? I mean, that's more from like your HR perspective than our. We will leave a list.
It's different, the EDC.
Yeah, that's true.
It's a body nation.
Yeah, we've listed comparable communities.
Do you have a list of contacts? I mean, I guess what I don't want to do is I don't want to start annoying, you know, municipal staff at a bunch of different, a bunch of different areas with a barrage of questions. Whether there's a way to kind of simplify that communication and get some feedback or whether you know if a lot of municipalities and islands already have policies in place or.
I don't know. And I think that's almost the first step is more looking at, you know, look at different comparative communities, OCPs and saying, do they have, do they even just mention this as a, as a principle?
Another, I could ask, well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, I think in the Islands Trust, uh, or Islands Trust communities.
Someone be able to, a quick way to figure that out. So that, that would be useful.
And David, I'll ask, um, I'll ask their head of planning. You would probably know.
Oh, David.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. Okay.
Well, you mentioned Metro Vancouver.
Yeah.
When you mentioned Metro Vancouver, um, do you have a contact there or?
Yeah, they had a planning.
Okay.
Yeah, they have email. I could ask Heather.
Right.
I'll ask Heather.
That would be great.
Okay. I'll go to things exactly.
Great, okay. Um, why don't we leave it there? Um, probably there's an opportunity to gather at least once before summer's in full swing. When is council? August?
August.
So, um, and I'll see, I'll test the letters with everybody and see if they want to do things on this one.
Okay.
And.
So, we often would just schedule the meeting based on council referrals or these.
So we, yeah, like our next APC meeting is June seventeenth, it says here.
You're away then, Drew, or you?
I will be away, uh, June seventeenth, I think is the meeting. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm away June tenth until July fifth.
But yes, I don't know if the, if the subcommittee wants to have, have stuff to bring, to discuss it at June, mid-June meeting, or is that too soon? And you'd rather say, okay, we probably have an APC meeting booked in July as well, and maybe that's a deadline.
I think we should work towards that. I think one month right now is too soon.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Gather information and then gather together.
Yeah.
So June seventeenth will stay on our calendars in case of.
As a regular APC meeting, but it won't address this question, yeah. Okay, we don't need to motion anything or anything to be discussing tonight on this side one, just a.
No one is objecting to the subcommittee's form?
No, no, do we run into, if we have, we've got six people on the committee, right?
Yes.
And, uh, so if we have, we can have up to three members, uh, or if we have four all meeting, does that get us into a problem with?
Oh, what, what policy can we agree?
We never run into that.
No, this is, no, this is a working group.
That's a work under, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Still invite David Martin.
It brings up an interesting question with voting, but that's, there's an equal.
Well, we won't be voting in this one.
Yeah, I see the point. Call people, vote for something, has a majority of the committee, but not.
Yeah.
As long as you're not going towards decision-making in that group.
Can you ever use the, uh, the APC, um, emails that everyone is apprised?
Oh, yeah, I, I would do that.
Yeah, great. Because I, I'd like to bring David, branch into this, should he wish to be.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't, I just have, it's Dennis, Michael and Louise.
Oh, uh, well, uh.
And you, Wayne, you can participate? And you're just gonna keep an eye on things. So, but that's gonna be in the main meetings.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And I would like to participate, but I'd love to see how that unfolds.
Well, I'll, I'll be sending out emails and everybody to.
Steph wants to track everybody and make sure that they show up. So, because you were there.
I just want you to think apart of it. I know you're home and you're something.
I'm getting nervous.
You're free.
So just on the seventeen, I'm, I'm also away on the seventeenth of that conference.
Oh, June seventeenth?
June seventeenth, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, okay, so we don't, we definitely don't want to come back. I, I, I think we need a bit of time to ruminate and.
We do a regular, uh, meeting scheduled. This is up to you, how much you got. At this point, do you know if there's anything new coming to the group?
I, I don't have to know that far ahead.
Right. Should there be a need, we could probably move that one week or something.
Yeah, we get, because on the Mondays and we hit council on the off weeks.
When's the July meeting start?
On the fifteenth of July, Monday.
Right.
I'm just gonna be away then.
You're gonna be away. Well, let's, let's recheck, then we also have a new member, so maybe.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna be replaced by July where there's, is a need to really be considering policies, big policy decisions. It'll wait until September and then we'll probably have some, you know, a rough draft or something we can bring to our, our, our regular scheduled meeting and make sure you're there, that you have it in advance.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'd like to, for you to participate in our first little workshop, if that's okay.
Stop it.
Huh?
You can't.
He can't?
You can't direct staff.
We can't direct staff? Who can direct staff?
The CEO and council.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so we'll ask Kathy.
I think we need to do, the way, the appropriate way to do that is to make a request through, uh, through council.
Well, okay, we'll, we'll just do it ourselves and you can live with Wisconsin.
But sure, Dennis got a lot of stuff to explain anyway. I'm sure he's quite happy to just, uh, do what he's already scheduled today. We'll, we'll get him to, we'll drive him back to the, in the context of our meetings.
I, I've done some districts like this, so I've, I've got a fairly good name to hold.
Oh, great, excellent. Well, that's really, I appreciate everybody's willingness to, or, I think it's, it's a great initiative.
Right.
Good.
So the June seventeenth, we're sticking with that for now, for now?
Yeah, for now. But we may shift it around based on availability.
Okay, so we're.
I guess we're on to item four point two of new business, the development procedure bylaw review. And this is what we need, Daniel.
So apologies for the, the giant stack of, of cryptic documents, um, so.
Certainly lots of backup or something.
Yeah, um, so Bowland Island has a development procedure bylaw that was adopted in nineteen ninety-two. It starts on page fifteen of the, of the package. It was, um, it's a Bowland Island Trust Committee bylaw. Love to spike Britain's stuff. It looks, yeah, it's great, conservation. Um, so one of the things that, actually the project that started last year was renewing a variety of our bylaws. We recently adopted a new fee bylaw, um, for the first time in nineteen years. Our development fees went up. And so the next on the to-do list was the procedure bylaw. So on the, the very last page of your package now is my, my overview letter. And so what, what we put together is, um, Sarah, one of our planners, before she left, had put together this overview of development bylaws. Um, and then she brought it back. That's what's here for you as well as, um, a couple example bylaws. And there's a couple of things that we've noted that, okay, um, aren't, aren't included in our development bylaw that we would like to have included. So, um, most notably, what we've been doing with variance permits to date is placing, um, notice signs on the properties. When somebody has a variance application and it's before council, we order them to place a sign on a property that tells people that there's a variance application in it and, um, you can tell council about it. Our development procedure bylaw doesn't require this, and so we've been, we didn't have to, like, staff have been ordering signs and placing them and making sure they get, get placed on.
So are you saying you, you as a volunteer, you doesn't have the right to do that, to put a sign up?
No, we don't have the right to require people to pay for it.
Ah, that part, yes, I read that part.
Yeah.
Which I thought, it's bizarre, but okay.
Yeah, so, so one of the things that we wanted to put in is, is, is something about, about notification and sign notification, particularly in the procedure bylaws. And this is part of the procedure is that when somebody applies, they're gonna be placing a sign on their property.
Is there, but, oh, sorry, that's my first question. Is, is there a legal issue about the municipality being allowed to erect a sign on private property? And is that something that needs to be addressed through this?
No, because I mean, we sort of, like, we do it, but we, we, like, with the applicant. So if, if somebody stuck in there, dug in their heels, then maybe we'd be having issues right now, I think, if it's not in our bylaw.
Right.
But it, but it's one of the things that's explicitly said you can do.
You probably can't just step onto somebody's property and put up a sign, but it can tell the owner of the property to put up a sign. I mean, it's a subtle difference, but.
It's for not so sign. You could put, you will put up a sign and you will.
And it'll say this and you'll pay for it. And then it probably has that power because it becomes a condition of the application.
Yeah.
And that's really how it's done everywhere?
Yeah, yeah. That's true, that's, that's.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's one of the things that we wanted to, to address is to put in, to some form of that. And the different example bylaws and different sort of ways of doing it. Um, some people just say it needs to be suitable. Like, I think one of the, the bylaws just said that the sign be suitable to the director of planning, that it meet them. And others say, like, it has to be this big and the font has to be this big and it must be this close to the road and it must be, blah, blah, blah. And so I'm not quite sure how it's referred.
Well, I, I think you just need to, uh, it needs to be readable and, uh, it needs to be weatherproof. And, uh, uh, you know, I.
I think the, I, I, it makes it hard, but the planner should decide because something that's in the cove on the main road is a very different thing than somebody that's down the end of a lane. And you don't want the same thing down at the end of, you don't need or want the same thing down the end of the lane. So that's why I would hesitate to write a, uh, it needs, you know, it needs to be X font and Y big and.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sort of, I think it would be actually easier to do it the other way. So, for instance, the Architectural Institute has a standard, standardized sign, which all architects are supposed to use. Now, there's an app, it's worked that way, but you've probably seen them, they're red and they're about eighteen inches deep, they're about three feet long. Um, and there's a company that makes those, and they know exactly what to make. They've got, they effectively have a template for making that sign. And so you change the parameters, but they've got everything else they need to make the sign. It would be easier for laypeople who don't know where to go to get a sign to begin with, uh, who are being told they have to get one, if the municipality said, you go to this company, we've, we've got an agreement with them, we're giving the absolute best price on, on a plastic sign. It, it has a standardized design with standard lettering and a small graphic on it showing the site. Everyone does the same sign and everybody pays the same amount for it. And so it's uniformly agreed upon all across the board. And so you don't have to write into the bylaw all of that stuff, you say, or, or you can, you say, but we don't need other companies.
But, and I think that's, yeah, the, the key, I think, is making it easy for people. So even if the violent, like, I think that's why some bylaws get into the, the details, because they're trying to spell out to people, this is exactly what you're gonna do, because then it's there. But I think, yeah, the flip is to say, you just say satisfaction of planning department, but then each other. And appropriate sign. This is how you're gonna do it and here's your template.
Right, and there's, and here's five companies who will do it for you or something.
I also think that the continuity is important. I mean, if it's variance applications, you want people to see them and know that this is something that perhaps they need to read and understand and comment on.
Good, good point.
And it's not just on a whole main graphic by someone using a pen and, you know.
Well, yeah, I think the municipality needs to do a graphic format, you know, and you use it for everything. And it clearly states rezoning, subdivision, you know, whatever it is, and then the information on it.
I guess you use the Mr. Dodo font.
Yeah, yeah.
But no, 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 those details don't need to be in the bylaw. The bylaw just says, as you said.
I think, yeah.
An appropriate sign to the satisfaction of the planning department.
Yeah.
You know, th- those signs are often a good source of gossip, actually. Oh, what are they doing?
And that's the other piece with it then is right now.
Cost, yeah, make them pay for it.
Yeah, and right now we're gonna do it for variances, and I'd like to expand it and do it for rezonings as well.
Oh, yeah, do it for every application.
Public has a right to know.
It's helping to get it easy for people, because we, we mail it to people and I always wonder, like, will people text their mail or do they? Whereas if it's like there on the copper, at least if you're sort of, you're there, you're like, oh, I can tell some things are going on and I can.
Well, and if it gets removed or something, you, you can't act on it, you know, you, you know. There's, you know, some people sort of take down the signs and hide them and do all kinds of things, you know, because they don't want the public getting upset about what they want to do. But the public has a right to know.
They do, a right to be nosy.
Yes.
Um, the second point then is that fairly straightforward, and I think in terms of, our, our bylaw doesn't talk about when an application is not active anymore. And some places do, and I would like to have that clear, and then we have ones where people applied for something in twenty twelve.
Is that a workable?
We, we have a couple that I can think of where people go, well, I have this active application. They go, well, it's not active, you haven't done anything in five years.
So, so it finishes and then they restart?
Yeah, and then they just reapply. But we'd say, you can't say, well, why not hang in application? You have to pay again and you have to, you can't just say, well, all this stuff is still there, you just need to start.
What's typical, like, like a building permit's two years, right?
Yeah.
So is a DP application live for two years?
I mean, I would look at it and I would probably put something in, like, if it's been dormant for two years or for a year or something.
Right.
Yeah, dormancy, because some things just go along and on.
Yeah, if it's us causing you not to get a permit or, you know, or just having endless committee hearings about it and it's still active. It's their fault, it hasn't gone anywhere, but, but I can think of some where they've sort of just stopped doing stuff. Or they applied, but then they're, they're not pursuing it.
They ran out of money.
Yeah, but then I don't have to come back and be like, okay, now I want to reactivate this same application.
A lot of them have a six-month waiting period after, like, it becomes inactive. They have to wait for, I thought I read in a lot of the, uh.
I think those are if you get turned down when you can.
You can't reapply.
Start cooling off period, couldn't it be?
And, and they're funny because they say that and then, you know, you can have it, but then if, it's like if, if two-thirds of council approves and somebody can reapply. So when I was in Kidamatt and somebody applied for a rezoning, they got turned down. They applied to council for the right to reapply ahead of the six-month period, and five counselors said, yes, you can reapply. And they went back to a public hearing and they got turned down again.
Wait for relaxation, I think.
Yeah. That's funny. Okay, so that one's easy.
Yeah.
Um, and the second one.
Are we, are we creating a recommendation now or are we?
I hadn't asked for a recommendation, because what I, I just wanted, yeah, yeah.
Hey, you can join this talk here, you know?
I was looking for initial, initial thoughts on it and then I'll be drafting a bylaw. The initial thought is.
So you don't, okay, so this is not formal, formal commentary about to, this is fine?
Yeah, this is fine, yeah.
Okay, good.
Um, and then partly, part of the reason was I knew, you know, I'd let you with, or I gave you all this reading, and people had other thoughts or things they saw and thought, this is the perfect bylaw than what I wanted. They were all, you know. Um, oh, and the last one was, was things about talking about, just outlining what is, what is looking for a rezoning application. So I said, like, the Seashell one, it makes clear terms of who, who's hosting the information meeting. And it, it's a fight that I often get into with people in terms of rezonings, it's council wants an information, the applicant to hold an information meeting or to do something. And, and I put this fight with people about, well, who's actually hosting it and who's preparing material for it and who is. Just all those pieces that I would like to outline, say, this is our bylaw, this is what the expectation is for a meeting. When council says applicant to hold an information meeting, this is what it, this is what they're saying.
Do most of the other places have specifics on that or?
Um, so I think I pulled the Seashell one.
Yeah, the Seashell, I think that's not my label.
Information, yeah, it's on page seventy-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Twenty, yeah, I have here, twenty-nine or twenty-eight, twenty-nine of this, of this is the Seashell one that says. It's like the applicant is responsible for making arrangements for the meeting, connecting the meeting, opening up possible.
Twenty-nine of both.
And how the applicant has to give notice to the.
What is the page of the overall?
Uh, twenty-nine of seventy-seven.
What is twenty-one?
Yeah.
So that's pretty simple.
Yeah, and just something that seems like, okay, yeah.
I, I think you should put the word public in front of information to do a recommendation. That's the way you do the decision.
Public information.
Because otherwise, we put the end to that council.
The, the mailing part seems a little unusual.
Like, the applicant has to mail it?
Yeah, that's, I've never seen that before. It's usual that the, the planning department does the notification?
Yeah, I mean, we have to for, like, for a public hearing, obviously, we do the, and for variances, we do the notification mailing.
So, so the conceptual, what's happening here is the onus is on the person who was doing the development to get all the ducks lined up.
Yeah.
I guess the only question here is if they miss someone, they don't notify someone, um, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
That could become quite tricky.
That's why they have to be careful, I think.
Well, I, I mean, it's quite tricky for the, um, the planners and the planning department as well.
A lot, a lot of cities do that mailing and notice.
Well, like I said, for, for the, the statutory requirements, we absolutely, like, doing would have to do. So like for public hearings for variances that appear before council. Um we, so I can think of a couple we've had where the applicant has mailed notice. Um so like the bell ringer when they were rezoning and Wolfgang would use rezoning up Rieden Dell. Both times they held meetings, they mailed it to neighbors from a list that we had given them.
Okay.
It could be part of a sign as well.
Yeah.
Public meeting. Date or notice.
Yeah.
That would take care of anyone living nearby who might not have got an notification for whatever reason, lost in the mail. But then, you know, it's also a sign, you know, it's advising there's gonna be a meeting on July seventeenth.
Yeah, there's often people that show up and say, well, I never received that, whether or not they did. They, would you also list these in the municipality regular sort of announcements that they send out once a week or however, the fund it is, put these things in that so that somebody may be, you know, like the bell ringer thing, well, half of the island might be really interested in that, just people within so many of the.
Um I think we generally have when there's like the information meetings, but I mean, more recently, all the ones have been municipal rezonings. And so we do, we've been the applicant and the municipality doing both hats, and so we do it all as part of it. But yes, I think in the past when we had, like, especially when somebody's been posting it here, we've advert, like, we've sent a notice to the our newsletter or whatever else we do as well.
Yeah, make sure the applicant applicant tells the municipality when the meeting is.
Yeah, that question, what about the, that's an interesting question.
Yeah. This is here.
What's the new community center, we could do this then.
Yeah, um so I've had people hold them at Collins Hall. I've done it at Cove Commons, which doesn't work super well, I've found, because they only let you use it when the library's closed. When the library's closed, you can only get there through the parking lot, and so it's not very visible. Or here. And I don't think, we don't charge people, like if people wanted to, can you do it here, probably do that depending on. And it's more location, like it kind of depends where the, where, like I'd like them ideally to be adjacent to where the the rezoning is, so it's like close for neighbors.
Right.
So it could be at somebody's home.
Yeah, I'm more hesitant, I I would be more hesitant saying that, because it feels.
Public meeting.
Yeah, like even when we were doing stuff around the Legion, um because they were changing their good neighbors agreement and we went into a neighborhood meeting. And we actually told the neighbors to say, would you rather meet at the Legion, who's the applicant, or would you rather meet in the municipal hall? And almost everybody's would rather meet here than sort of the applicant site, so.
At the community center.
Yeah, yeah, one more reason.
Yeah, Cove Commons, of course, is a municipal building.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's for the applicant to worry about.
Maybe you should sort of have a standard place to hold it, you know, as opposed to have it up for grabs.
But I think it would be like if it was a rezoning, like if Seymour Bay, there is a rezoning, I think, you know, I think all of course seems to make sense, like somewhere. Right, or it's, you know, somewhere near Tunstall, has Saint Tunstall Bay New Association that can host it or something. Right, and rather like a public place, but rather make everybody come all the way over here.
Yeah. Let the applicant worry about it.
It might be that you could incorporate as a general statement like that about the venue, ideally the venue would be, that isn't term ideally, but the the meeting venue should be close to the uh decided question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or do you want to be that restrictive in print or just give the encouragement?
It's common sense, I mean, you don't have to.
Yeah, and generally people, yeah, come to that conclusion when they think of places to post it. So I, what I'm gonna do, my next step is actually then draft a bylaw, and so then I think, yes, before we move beyond it. Yeah.
And I'm just gonna note to myself, I don't, I don't know whether there's any um any interface at all, but I wonder if there were an interface between this and DPCs. Or so, the local council, DCCs.
No, and that DCCs are set in terms of like their their fees we can impose at development for to recover certain things. So it's like sewer water park and parking.
But there's, there's no interface between the procedures and payment of of DCCs?
No. So this one is just about.
I know we're not there, but I'm sort of anticipating that that may become.
Well, even one of the other island plan pieces was considering um community amenity contributions and policy for that, it's another thing on our list. But, yeah, so with this, my my goal is then maybe the September meeting is to have a a bylaw for you to look at to then recommend to go to council to. So I won't resend all the bylaws to you, but you will have them, you know, and so if you want to, yes, then don't worry, yeah.
So just use courier as your typeface.
Yes.
You can trigger, like, tell me that and I'll links.
Yeah, okay, um but if people have other thoughts on it too, I'm happy to hear that, you know, before the meeting or or whenever.
Any other, any other discussion about about that? Development procedure bylaw? Information items?
Just the island plan, I'm linking that to all the agendas now.
Okay, great, thank you. Next meeting scheduled for June eleventh unless.
June seventeenth?
Sorry, June seventeenth, unless it changes. In the absence of David Rich, if someone would like to adjourn.
I'll I'll be there.
I'm cursing, I'll, in second, it's on Michael's head, it's in a little second, all okay, we're. He can't, he really wants to, he can tell.
You know what, that's the one motion that doesn't require a second.
What, getting.
A motion to adjourn does not require a second and is not debatable.
Oh.
It's Robert's rule of order. Because at no point, if you make a motion to adjourn and everybody goes on for like thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Common sense. Thank you for.